6:35, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Take a look through your board package here. So the meeting is being recorded?
I just did, that's nice.
Is being recorded?
I just did, thank you.
I'm getting myself already. At the end of the meeting, the board will adjourn to executive session adjourn to executive session for, to discuss legal strategy and the purchase of real property. And they will be doing this in executive session because it would not be advantageous to the board do in public. And that's the beginning. Oh, and I would like a volunteer for timekeeper for the meeting. Someone other than Roll.
I'll keep time. Yeah, can I have the gavel though, so I can take a look at it?
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, thank you for volunteering. Okay, so as per last session, so first, do we have any public comment?
No.
No public comment? Thank you. And this is the comment, as per last meeting, we are following the design of pulling all the votes to the top of the meeting. And so I'll give you a moment to review the, first item up is to review and approve the minutes from last meeting.
I move that we accept.
Second?
Chris and Liz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
All votes. Motion passes. Next up is the vote on the bonus for Anders Lewis covering the last year. So we, just a brief, as a introduction to this, I believe there is... Just looking, is there information in the packet?
Guess it doesn't get a bonus.
My mistake in communication. So I'll pick the, leave this up. So at governance meeting, we discussed, we discussed the performance versus goals. So at the beginning of the school year, during the summer timeframe, we set a series of four goals for the administration for Anders Lewis to complete, which was around, for other people at governance to help me out, finance, balance budget, develop, reaching out to community in regards to development.
I'm sure it was, or culture.
Culture and continued growth of the school.
Academic.
Yeah, oh right, right, there was academic growth as measured by scores. And the governance committee voted to give Anders 100% of his bonus, of his possible bonus. It was a detailed discussion governance. We could, Sarah, I could request that you add the handout that was given to governance to the meeting. Add it as supplemental material minutes. I don't know if anybody else who was at the governance meeting wishes to seek, ever Chris?
It was very straightforward and, you know, and I think consensual, so there really wasn't too much to discuss.
Yeah, pretty much, I think unanimous.
Yes, it was unanimous vote of the governance committee to, for 100% bonus. So at this point, I guess, is there further discussion? I'll take a motion.
Maybe he'll be able to afford long pants now.
Yeah.
With that understanding, I move that we accept the governance committee's, governance committee's recommendation.
Says a man in a funny shirt. Sorry.
Second.
Chris and, Chris and second by Ev, all in favor?
Aye.
All votes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations, Anders. For a fantastic year. Next, next up is, this is our, so this is a odd number year, so in the odd number year, we vote to approve new committee chairs for the next, for a two-year term. And so the committee, committees are, so first, finance is always the treasurer of the boards, there is no election for the finance committee. We have education, governance, and development to staff. So I'd first like to start with education. Liz, would you like to continue as education chair?
Yes, but I will say that we do need to beef up the education committee. We've lost one of our members because his daughter is leaving the school, so, and we are getting another, they have identified another student to bring on, but I would like to make sure that we could at least bring on another, preferably member of the board to join the committee, if possible. Because I don't think Jess was joining and Brianna had been on the education committee, so it would be good to have someone else from the board on the ed committee.
Yes, I agree completely. So that'll be, you're getting ahead of me a little bit, the next step up is that we will be staffing, we will be assigning the board members to committees after we, after we vote on the chair. So the chair is a vote and then the member assignment is a board discussion.
Okay.
So I'd like to nominate Liz to continue as education chair.
Second?
Yes. Second from Jill, all in favor?
Yeah, abstain.
Liz abstains, motion passes. Next up is governance committee. I've been the chair of governance for the last two years, and at this point, I'd like to nominate, Jill, would you like to take on the role of governance chair?
Sure.
She doesn't even look surprised.
So I'd like to nominate Jill as governance chair. She's already been a member of the board and she will be secretary as of July 1st, and it's an ideal combination of governance chair and secretary is a great combination.
Second?
Liz seconds, all in favor? Motion passes. Third committee is development. We have a couple of board members who have been essentially on development and are in the process of stepping back, so, and we have a couple of very strong candidates in the pipeline for the development committee. So, but in the interim, I think the best option would be for myself to take on development chair until, with the, with the goal of passing that baton to one of the candidate new board members, unless somebody else would like to step forward for development. So I'd like to-
I nominate Roger.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Chris and Liz, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So next, now that we have committee chairs, we need to, I'll continue with the second part of this, is, is to fill out the committees. So just sort of working our, working our way around the room, Roll, you'd like to continue on governance?
Yes, please.
Kristin, you're, you're chair of finance? Chris?
I'll continue on governance.
Continue on govern, would you like to continue on development?
So I've had a conversation with Roger and Pauline in the last few weeks, and I'll be staying for an additional three months, so I'm leaving at the end of September.
That's great, thank you.
Would you like to be on development or governance?
Well, actually, that's, that's-
Or is that a-
Almost the same thing, right?
You'd like to continue on both governance and development?
Yes.
Fantastic, that would be great. I will continue on, on governance and development. Liz, you've got education, that's plenty.
Yeah.
Jill, you have governance?
Governance, yeah.
Starting July 1st, what would you?
I'm happy to serve on NAAM for three. Wherever I, wherever the board would see where I might be needed most.
Development.
I would suggest development.
Development. Happy to.
That would be great. Development. For three months. Yes. Welcome to development committee. And Jess will be on governance. So I think that pretty well covers, and Jean would continue on finance. I think that, one, two, three, six, seven, eight, nine, yes, that covers everyone. Alright, check, Board Advisory Council. Like to nominate two, two new members of Board Advisory Council. The first would be Pauline Ryan. She has completed her service as board member and is ready to continue to work, continue to work with the school.
Is that a motion?
Motion, motion for Pauline to be nominated to the Board Advisory Council.
Second.
Second by Kristin, all in favor?
Aye.
Second person I would like to nominate is Lucy Veratek to the Board Advisory Council. She, via indirect conversation with Ellen, Lucy indicated that she is interested in continuing to help the board as much as she can. She is deep into her new position right now, but hopes to come up for air soon, so it would be great, any, any help that she can provide us would be fantastic.
So who shares the motion?
I'm making the motion for-
How second?
I have seconds, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Board Advisory Council, are there any other votes that I am missing? We're going to switch, switch things up and do the parent, parent report while we continue to fight with technical difficulties.
So I was just going to mention that eighth grade graduation or step-up day was very well attended, it was great. Many kids missed it, much less parents, it's a really good tradition, I guess that's the third one in a row that they've done, so I think that's a really great tradition that they, that they started, that they're continuing. And maybe we can, you guys can answer my question when we get to development, but I kind of had a question, I started drafting the development letter to the parents, and my question is more like, you know, what's the offer? What are we telling the parents they're going to get? And how are they, how are they really, like, I feel like it needs to be more specific than general, but I guess if you guys think it should be just a general outreach for whatever a parent can offer? Or should I make it like a specific problem, like, this is the problem, facilities, i.e., and, you know, your donation of this could solve this part of the problem? I don't know, I just wanted to get your ideas as what I really should be asking the parents for, what's the offer?
And I thought, and it might not have been last year, it might have been the year before, but I thought in, sort of along those lines, we were looking for specific donations or a specific amount for another card of computers? I don't-
Yeah, so this year, it was part of operations, operating expenses, and then next year, the idea was it's going towards IT, the things we had a ton of IT this year.
Okay.
But I think that's, there's two separate, I think there's two separate discussions going on here. There's one discussion around the annual giving campaign as to what, what that would be used for. Is that-
Is that what you asked them?
No, that's not what, that's not what, that's not what's being asked.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
So the other, the task that Jill has is to, was given to us, to, is Anderson, to write, write a general, write a letter to the community, to our parents to say, in some form of, can you, how can you help the school?
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. More general, it's not directed at the campaign, got it?
Right, so I think it's, it's separate from the annual giving campaign.
So one thing that we identified in ed committee is if the, any parents have access or knowledge or ideas around internships, that's an example of where parents, you know, involvement and if they have-
Correct.
-the ability to bring that to the table, that would be very helpful.
I think that's an easier letter to write, if you have a specific problem, and how the parent contribution could solve the problem. It's, you know, it's simple and specific, and the parent actually feels like, you know, it's-
So are you looking for examples of how they can, or are you-
That would be one letter that could go out, or the first version. I don't know, I just started writing it, I didn't feel comfortable with the general ask, because I felt that, well, first of all, no one would really respond to it, I don't think I would.
Yeah, no, I do think it needs to be more specific, I see what you're saying.
I would think it almost would be a checkbox sort of thing, is that, and what we can ask parents for, seemed a little weird to ask them for cash when we're just wrapping up the campaign, so we've been asking them for cash every few weeks for the last couple of months.
This will go out in September, or October, September? That's when this letter will go out?
Oh, okay.
Beginning of the school year, like, when everyone is brought out, you know?
So could it include maybe different bullet points on how they can get involved? Like identifying internships might be one, identifying, and one thing I just noticed, because I posted on AMSA chat, because I got my quarterly report on what my Amazon Smile donation was, and a parent immediately responded and said, and I think it's a new parent, and said, "I, I just got Microsoft signed up as a, they're going to match donations from people who work it." So the donor matching is another way that parents can really contribute in a broader way.
Jill, there's also, on the website, Anders and I put together a list of 11 ways for parents to get involved, so we could take a look at that too and add some of those to your list.
Or you could also do the opposite, or do, do both, but you could also have the letter point at the website as well.
And we can add things to that letter, so the internships and things and the matching, I don't think those things are on that list, so we can update it and make it 15 things that parents can do, or more.
Okay.
So, so what are you thinking on next steps?
I just need some more direction.
I think one, one possible next step, I was thinking since we, using, leveraging development committee, that you could send a letter, send, send a draft to the development committee and to Ellen.
I think that was the plan, it was to run it by development first.
Yeah, I think a couple of flavors of introductions would be, I'm not sure how you phrase it, how you, you just, you know, parse it out, but, so if they, if you work for a company that's got a, you know, can you introduce this to a senior HR person? Marketing person, corporate giving person? And again, we have to work on how to phrase that. You know, maybe, maybe a question like, is there somebody? Do you work for a company that has an interest in science education? Yes, please name a company. Do you know, do you have, you know, would you be willing to introduce us to somebody?
Right.
Yeah, maybe it's a letter with a link to a survey of some kind, or they click, click, and not have to send an email back to us, or-
Okay.
Because, you know, I'm trying to think, so we, so, because we could find out that we have 15 parents who work for GE. That's something important that we can, that we can, you know, develop something from.
Right, just having that data, that knowledge, right.
So Liz, are there any other questions on your, on the letter, or as parent?
No, I just wanted to give some direction and mix the two, development and parent route, if I want to. Yeah, that's okay, that's why I was giving it a little leeway. Thank you.
Any questions for Jill? I'd like to transition back to Ellen.
Alright, thank you. Jill, one other thing is just asking if parents have connections with their companies for donation, especially for technology, like the microscope, but maybe even on a smaller scale, so. Alright, well, good evening, everyone, good to see you all here. This is our ED report for the, for the, I guess the last one for this fiscal year, last one that Anders will be here with us. Here's an overview of what we're going to look at tonight, we're going to have some summertime thank yous to Dr. Lewis, our beloved executive director, teachers, counselors, staff, for those of you who are departing, and glad to hear that Chris is going to stay with us for a little bit longer, we'll do our little razzle-dazzle time, we're going to talk a little bit about this school counseling grant that we received recently, a little update on community outreach and on the annual campaign, and then we're going to talk about our focus for the 2019, 2020 school year and our vision for that for next year. Okay, so first, we have our summertime thank yous, and I do want to say that we would not be where we are today without, without Dr. Lewis. And also to let you know that he'll be teaching two sections of APUS history next year and two sections of the elective hate the dark side of American history, very excited about seeing the crystal.
Why, I hate going on.
I hate going on. And that he will continue as the executive advisor, aka the EA. But I also wanted to take a second and share with you something that I read during my remarks at graduation, because many of you weren't here, and I think it's important for all of us to kind of reflect on what has transpired over the last two and a half years and to thank you and to, to thank Dr. Lewis. So this is what I read at graduation, a piece of it. So nearly two and a half years ago, AMSA's Board of Trustees made a very important decision that would change the trajectory of our school. This decision would effectively end the turbulent times of the past and open up new opportunities for growth in our community. Their decision was risky, and there was no guarantee that it would be successful, but they took the risk and they asked Dr. Lewis to be AMSA's executive director, and I would like to thank them one more time for making that decision, so thank you all who were involved in that. But that decision had a tremendous impact on Dr. Lewis's life. He made a huge personal sacrifice to leave the classroom and to lead our school. We all know that he's a teacher down to his very core of his being, and so, back to the classroom he must go. But what Dr. Lewis might not realize is that while he's been the executive director of AMSA, he's been teaching all of us in the biggest classroom of his career. We have all been his students, as he taught us how to build a community of trust, respect, and collaboration. He taught us how to laugh again, find joy in our classrooms and in our offices, and how to stand strong and how to fight for what's right. He taught us how to kia kaha, and he taught me who I am. Dr. Lewis, on behalf of the entire AMSA community, we thank you for your service. We couldn't appreciate or love you more.
If I could only make all Yankee fans.
That's never going to happen, but couldn't appreciate you more, Dr. Lewis, thank you, thank you so much for everything. Okay, we also want to appreciate and thank our wonderful teachers, counselors, our staff, and our administrators, and in particular, the team that I work so closely with each and every day. We have wonderful educators here at AMSA, we've all acknowledged that time and time again, they're passionate, brilliant people, and they love our kids, and they're such wonderful teachers, they've devoted their whole lives to, to educating some of your children and, and all the children here who belong in our community. And we also have wonderful counselors who dedicate so many of their hours to making sure that our kids are emotionally safe, to our staff members, people like Eric Lane, who makes sure that our roads are clear in the snow and the ice, he's out there doing the work himself and making sure these buildings are running, and believe me, that's no small task on his behalf. And I am grateful every single day, every moment of every day, for the team of people that I get to work most closely with, namely, Mike Muraki, Brianna Murphy, Dr. Lewis by my side the last two and a half years, the deans of students that I've worked with. It's been an amazing experience and we had a great year together. We also want to acknowledge that we do have some board members that are moving on this month, this is their last month with us, great surprise tonight to hear that Chris is staying with us for a few more months. He has been an invaluable member of the board and I respect him greatly and appreciate his service for sure. These are the dates that folks came on, Pauline has been serving on our board since June 14th, 2012, Chris since November 21st, 2013, I think that means you should stay till November, just to round that out. Rick Hamal has served since April 17th, 2014. Ev, thank you so much for everything you've done for us. It's been an absolute pleasure, you're a real, a real gentleman, thank you. Has served on our board since November 20th, 2014. And Lucy, who isn't here, but who I had the opportunity to go to Starbucks with just last week, since October 27th, 2016. So our deepest graduate, thank you, gratitude to all of you for the work that you've done on our board, we wouldn't run without you, so thank you. We have just a little bit of a remembrance for you, so thank you very much. And Sarah Snow has a little something, for those of you who aren't here but are watching this, you'll get it in the mail.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so a little bit of razzle-dazzle time before we get into more serious stuff. Alright, so this is a little snippet from our graduation, thought we'd share with you for those of you who weren't there. Alright, this is eighth grade step-up night.
These have been a terrific year for Larry for me, and for that, I can't thank you enough. I was your teacher this year, but wow, without you knowing, you were my teacher.
So let's go onto the next, the next slide. Alright, so we have some school counseling news. So if you guys wouldn't mind keep working on that, see if we can get it done for Senovian, that would be, the Senovian video is really the most important one. School counseling news, it was a very, so the Department of Education put out openings for these grants, and this was for mental and behavioral health services, and they didn't have a very big window, Kate Driver worked on this for hours and hours and hours, did a beautiful job on it, and, and as I said, it was a very competitive grant throughout the state, and we received one of those grants, for $110,000. Some of it was used, a little, we, a little bit, like 10, 11,000 this year, and the rest will get next year. Now, these are, these are restricted grants, which means it can only be used for the actual items that Kate applied as part of the grant, but we will have assistance for families to get counseling referrals, there's PD involved- There's PD involved, especially around working with students that are in high-performing, high-stress schools like AMSA. We, it will give us some money to have a part-time clinician come in one day a week and work with some of our students most at risk. Also some technology. There's actually money in there for another Chrome Card that would be used exclusively for school counseling. And speakers to come in, like we've had the anxiety speakers and a couple others. There's some money in there for them to be, to get involved, have some more speakers come in. So that was very, very exciting. So community outreach update. The annual campaign this year, we are under, but we were hoping, Anders and I did a video last week that did help bring in another $2,000 or $3,000. But right now, our goal was $40,000, and we're up to $34,130. But we are into the summer. Of the 738 families that we have here at AMSA, 169 participated. So I think there's still some work that we can do around the annual campaign. We didn't quite hit our goal this year. A couple other community outreach things that happened that were kind of exciting through the Marlboro STEM Council, which was, started with Mark Vidal. They put together an M20 summit. And what that was, was six students from each school, AMSA, Marlboro High School, and Asebette got together. They spent part of the day in Marlboro, at Marlboro High, part of the day at Asebette. They used our buses. And they worked on a space habitation project. This was on the 30th of May. I read all the feedback from the kids that they had, and they really enjoyed their time together, learning from, and getting to know people from the other schools and finding out what people's strengths were. So it was, and they all enjoyed it. The main feedback was, can we please do it for two days next year instead of just one? Because they didn't feel that they had enough time. Quest Diagnostics across the street here has invited our students over for tours. We've done some tours with them. They want to continue and to expand that. It was very exciting for the kids to actually go into labs and see what's really there and the updated equipment, and they were great to the kids. Synovian, we've done a lot of work with Synovian this year. You've heard all about our students that got the $2,500 scholarships in the time that they spent with the scientists over Synovian. And then our kids came back here and they, they taught our seventh graders. So I told you about that. Well, Synovian then, Synovian put together this, this video here that they blasted all out through their, through their own media. Switch, switch accounts to mine, Anders. And so it got picked up. So this video, which is beautifully done by Synovian Public Relations, was picked up by that list there on the right of different, so if you put in your, well, yes, you could, you could do this. We can't get the video. Very disappointing. But if you put in, if you search Synovian AMSA, you'll be able to come up with the press release that was put out and this video that was professionally made. Mike Noraki is featured in there, Mark Vidal's in there, and all our kids. It's a beautiful example of what we can do when we work with, with companies. So it's Synovian, S-U-N-O-V-I-O-N, and AMSA Partnership.
First of all, just want to say congratulations to AMSA. Having worked with these young ladies over the past quarter, I can easily see why the high school is ranked as high as it is.
This opportunity, it's a beautiful one for AMSA. I want to keep this going. AMSA wants to keep this partnership going. Let's keep this alive. It's all about the students.
The coolest thing, and maybe the most important thing, is that some of the scientists from Synovian inspired our seniors, and our seniors inspired our seventh graders. So hopefully there's a whole generation of scientists that are being developed just because of this project.
It's been very rewarding for this new team to work with the students and especially to give back and teach them about certain aspects of science.
Working with Synovian helped spark an interest in neuroscience that I had before, but I didn't think was as serious until we got to work with them. And it was a great experience to practice teaching and presenting in front of people.
They asked a lot of really great questions, and they got super into it in the lessons. And some of the questions did kind of surprise us a little bit.
They picked it up pretty quickly and everything, so I was kind of happy to see them actually get excited about neuroscience as much as I do and like the rest of us.
This project is an opportunity for our high school seniors to learn from some of the best scientists here in the greater Marlboro area.
The world needs more scientists. I hope that you take those lessons and that really solid training that you've received and really go and build on it, whatever your next step is.
Great, okay. So this was an opportunity that I had. It was kind of exciting. This was put together by Raj Schlaackler, who is the president and CEO of the Marlboro Chamber of Commerce. What he, his idea was, was to bring the three superintendents together. That's Mike Bergeron on the left, that's me on the right, honestly. And Ernie wasn't able, you know, Ernie who is the superintendent of Asebette, wasn't able to join us that day. But Mike and I get to spend the morning together at a new museum, the American Heritage Museum, that's in Hudson. It just opened up May 3rd. Our history department then went down and spent a half a day there in June. It's absolutely amazing. They have, I can't even tell you, all the tanks that they have there. There's a whole story behind it. I can tell you later if you're interested. But this was a wonderful community, you know, outreach with the Chamber of Commerce. And to be able to spend the day with Mike Bergeron was priceless. And the gentleman in the middle, he's the director of marketing there at the museum. His name is Hunter Chaney. And Hunter has gone out of his way to really welcome us to be able, and he, it was, it didn't cost the school anything to send all our history department down there for a half a day. They had a room that they allowed us to use for the teachers to meet. So it was a fabulous collaborative event. Okay, so talking a little bit about ED vision for 2019, 2020. We spent a lot of time thinking about what we want to look at in the year ahead. And so we want to, you know, continue to talk about the fact that we as an administration are committed to educating all students, all backgrounds, all abilities, and helping to excel in all subjects, right? It's a shortened version of our mission, but the idea is that that doesn't change. That is the foundation and core of who we are, is our mission, and we are, we are dedicated to upholding that and also adding in our core values. So that's always going to be integrity, excellence, and community. It's always going to be who we are and what helps us to make our decisions going forward. Our goal number, number one for the next, for the next year is to continue to build that trust that we've been working on so much over the last two and a half years, and that we continue to build these relationships that are based on respect. And building those relationships of trust in a collaborative way with our solutions coming from the, from the bottom up. And when we have things that come up in the community that we come together. We have plans for our August PD already. In fact, our August PD is already planned out already. We spent the last couple days on it. And we have a couple of things that we're going to be working with the teachers and getting their feedback on. So that work is already in process. And also more transparency. I think it's, there's things, some things that we can't, you know, talk about with the building and things like that. But to continue to update our staff on things that are, that are going on and being transparent, especially when it comes to like topics like the budget, I think is very important. And continue to improve our communication. The next goal, number two is around excellence and in the area of academic excellence, because we want to, you know, bring our level of performance up in all areas. The first one that we're going to talk about is academic excellence. And that's continuing to pursue, you know, that strong curriculum, challenging classes with high expectations. And also offering our teachers, enriching PD, that that will continue as we go forward. And also continuing to pursue excellence and evidence through our strong AP scores and our MCAS scores. And then also continuing to emphasize, and we talked about this too, with, we have a few new staff members coming in in August, and what are some of the things we want to focus on with them? And that is to educate everyone around what the role is of our department chairs. We've talked a lot about that. Our department chairs run and drive our curriculum. They create curriculum. They write curriculum. They are our academic experts. And that will, that role will continue. It's a very key part of what makes AMSA a very special place. And then we're going to continue our academic excellence committee. It was very successful this year. We had 27 people participate. All of them said, yes, please, let's do it another year. This may be a committee that we keep forever. It's become a very important part of who we are. But I also want to add in an integrity committee. And this actually came out with a conversation that I had with a teacher this year. I met with almost all of our staff members individually this spring, anywhere from 15-minute conversations to 45-minute conversations. This was a suggestion made by a teacher. We want to talk about integrity in each one of the core values. Let's put a committee together with integrity, and let's find out what does integrity mean to us? How do we really instill it into the community and make it part of the very fabric of AMSA? And I think, you know, integrity is something that we toss around, and what does it mean? Well, there's integrity in all areas. There's academic integrity, but there's also who we are as people and how we live our lives. And so we're going to put that committee together, much like the excellence committee, meet together monthly, and, and find out what does integrity mean to AMSA. And then the year after that, we're going to do the same thing with community. Community is a little bit easier. We have a better idea of what that means, but let's really kind of tighten it up and figure out, you know, what that means for, for all of us. And then of course, we've got the Didero Society. We've been talking about that, and that is, has launched, and it's really going to take off in the fall. They voted on, on their officers and their nights of the round table. So that's going to be awesome. The next one on excellence, this is around professional excellence for those adults in the community. We want to continue to talk about our daily routines, the consistency in the classroom and outside the classroom. You know, things like attendance and uniform. Are we all approaching those things in the same way? And the clarification around the expectations of behavior in the classroom. So just tightening all those types of things up and just raising the bar for everyone in our community. Also, we want to, one of the things we really focused on this year was classroom attendance. And that may seem like a small thing, but it's really important to know where every single student is during the day, right? There could be a fire drill, something could happen. We need to know where our kids are. And we really tightened that up, and the teachers really rose to the occasion on that. And they, and we were able by the end of the year, midway through the year even, to really make that part of their everyday routine. We want to do the same things with communication protocol. And for that, a lot of that is around plus portals. It's a challenge we've had all along, but we're going to take that one thing, we're going to focus on it, just like we did with attendance. We got attendance under control. We focused on that one thing. And this is what we're going to do this year. It's going to be around the plus portals, getting those things updated and getting grade books updated. And we're going to continue to support our ELL learners, kids, students who are on plans for 504 and IEP plans, and continue to support them and what they need to be successful. Okay, communication. Communication is key. You'll see in the survey that the communication percentages actually look good. We're very happy with those. But we want to continue with that. And we talked about collaboration and transparency. But, you know, the communication is key. It goes hand in hand with, with building trust. And so we're going to be committed, obviously, to continue with the family forums, with the community council. We'll be getting new members for next year. And also, I want to add in ED roundtables for the staff. So once a month, I'm going to be in, it will be the fourth Thursday of the month, I'm going to be in the conference room downstairs, and anyone can come at any time and ask me any questions, any updates that I have. I will be available to give them that information. And I'm hoping that, that people will come and will want to talk. But I want to make myself available for the staff. Also, continue with the open door policy. As I mentioned, one of the things I did do this year since, since March 1st was to set up opportunities to meet with all of the teachers. I met with most of them. I promised I wouldn't keep track, but I would say, there was one three-day period, I met with 21 different, different teachers. And so it was wonderful. They came and we talked, and we talked about their pets, and we talked about things in the classroom. And it was a huge range. Wonderful education for me and an opportunity for them to get to know me and for me to get to know them on a completely different level. And then we started work yesterday. We had a, someone that came in and did PD with us around cultural diversity, celebrating our differences. We've talked about this a lot, but we need to continue our conversation around cultural competencies and how we are celebrating the differences in the, in our community. And so we're going to start that work. As I said, we met, had a speaker come in yesterday, just PD with the admin. And then they're going to come again in August and, and work with all our teachers. Okay, so here to sum it all up, here's our, our little summary screen. We are going to continue to fulfill our mission. We're going to model our core values, and we will meet our goals. We're going to create a community of trust, collaboration, and learning. And every student will be challenged and supported, and no kid will fall through the cracks at AMSA. Have a great summer and go Eagles.
So for that behavioral health grant, $110,000?
Yes.
How much of that is, is going to be used for one-time projects? And how much of that are you going to need to find a way to pay for in out years? $110,000 that goes away. Some of it looks like it was one-time. Some of it clearly isn't.
Right, there's some things that Kate will be able to do. For example, purchasing the Chrome Card, that obviously that will be useful for five years. And there's some other prescriptions, subscriptions to things that, that will continue, but it won't continue. A lot of those things that she'll be able to put in place for one year. We'll be able to learn from the experience, be able to offer those, those services. But then in order to, like some of the, there's the website that helps people find counseling services. If it's something that we think we can afford in years down the line, we can look at that. But that will only pay for one, one year of that.
Are there opportunities for her to do like train the trainer kinds of activities so that some of the capacity that she brings, the consultant brings, will get, then be built into the
Sure.
space of the school?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
I got four questions.
Okay.
The academic excellence committee. So that is the committee that was dealing with the whole tension between academic excellence and whole child this past year, right?
Right, and we have a PD already that's in the works, that's planned. We're calling it Finding the Keystone. And so it's finding, it's finding that middle ground. Because what we've, what we've found in the academic excellence committee, it's been really very, very interesting, is that people have had a chance to express that really when they sit down and they talk to each other, there really isn't any difference. Everyone wants what's best for every child. People express it in different ways, or they hear different things, or they use different words that they interpret different ways. But the idea of the workshop that we'll be having in August is, is having that opportunity to sit down and, and really share ideas from, from all sides. Because when we've done that, the academic excellence committee, all of a sudden people are going, oh, is that what you meant? Oh, I get it now. And so that's been really successful. And some of the people who, who have been what, what they thought was so far on one side or the other, have really found out that they're actually in the Keystone. And so we want to move everybody up to that place where we're, we're all using the same language and understand each other.
And how are those committees populated? Who's on them?
Anyone who wants to be. It's thrown out to the whole staff and says, anyone who's interested and wants to, to be part of this committee, you can be part of it. And then in, in September, when we all get back, Chris, we've already got the schedule, the time scheduled that we'll be meeting, we'll open it up again. Anyone who's interested, please, please come.
So staff, faculty and staff?
Yeah, everyone that's, right, paid employees. Not students, no, no.
Last question. So around the IEP 504 ELL, kind of opening our game there, have you thought about what the metrics are going to be for, how are you going to gauge success?
Well, yes, it will be actually when the Department of Education comes in. We did, we did self-assessments in each department this spring. That gives us kind of a foundation, but then the Department of Education will be coming in as part of the charter renewal process, and that will be more formalized.
To do better on their evaluation of those areas?
Yes, yes. But especially in ELL this year, they did, they did a really nice job. We have a new ELL director, Kate Lee, and she did a beautiful job of doing a full self-assessment. And we sat down and created goals for next year. That work's been done already. And there's parent and parent surveys that have been done for both programs too.
So a suggestion about that, because it's still, so I still remember the graphs I saw in the Telegram and Gazette three years ago, that showed where the charter schools are supposed to be and the direction they're supposed to be moving with ELLs. And we are, ours are going in the wrong direction. So I think along with doing this, there should be a plan to publicize what you're doing and what the results are.
Yeah, you know, part of that was that the students were not being
Got that, Mike?
The students were not being screened at that time, Chris. And once we screened them, it will be actually two years ago this September, we actually found out that 10% of our students did fall under that ELL category, but it looked like it was zero. was zero before because the program had been dropped. But actually, I believe if you look, Marlboro High School is at nine percent and we're at ten percent, so we're falling in that, in that category there.
So I, I think you need to spend some effort on communicating that, because-
Yeah.
People remember something they saw in the paper.
Sure, and they probably were getting the numbers from our SIMs that we filed with the Department of Education and sense those, every year it's been updated with the correct numbers now, but, yes.
If your, if your ELL numbers track with Marlboro, the Marlboro Public Schools, that is a really important thing. I mean, that, that neutralizes a whole lot of criticism that you get as a charter school.
Right, two years ago, we tested in a hundred and one students into the ELL program. Yep, some have opted out to participate in it, um, but they are still coded that way. Any other questions?
Well, I wanna give a follow-up presentation, but I was just gonna say your goals are closely aligned with the survey results, so.
And interestingly enough, we were going over things with Raul before, but, um, I had not seen the survey results prior to, um, creating those, so, um, I think that-
But you guys are well in tune with what's going on at the school and you're dealing with the right stuff.
Oh, that, that's, that's good. I think we know us, we know ourselves, we know our strengths, and, and I think we know where we're weak. And we're still a very young school, um, and we need to continue to, to look at where we are, where we're heading, and then continue to tighten up processes and, um, and just, just bring all of us up to the next level, right? Not just the kids. It's not excellence just for our students, it's excellence for our adults, it's, it's excellence for, for all of us, so let's just bring it up a notch.
All right, thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Just as point of reference, no pressure, Raul, but we're about eighteen minutes over schedule.
So that means I have seven minutes?
Yeah, exactly.
You're supposed to say that when it's early enough to take action about it. That's fine, I can, I can be brief. So, um, there's something in your packet, the, um, so we actually printed out the full surveys, but we're not gonna go through the full surveys because that's definitely gonna be more than seventeen minutes. Um, but we, we created kind of a, a summary in, in the survey task force. And by the way, this is following through on our promise that we made in the last board meeting, that, you know, the very next board meeting after the survey closes, we'll have their report, so it's definitely better timing than last, last, last survey. So, one first comment I wanna make is that we want, what we want to do is provide observations on the survey results. We're not suggesting any specific focus areas, we're actually intending it to be part of the discussion on what the focus areas should be, but like we just commented, the things that administration is already doing, we feel is very closely aligned to the, the things that, that were from trending, from a trending perspective, that could probably be focus areas, but we're by no means suggesting any specific focus area other than coming, that could come from the discussion. We're trying to just focus on the data. Um, with that in mind, the first thing that we noticed is a comparison, by the way, just one of the ways this report, the summary is built, is to compare twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen, because if you remember, for the first time, now we have a consistent survey year to year. And that allowed us to compare trends, so when Panorama says, "Oh, this was a, uh, reduction in favorable responses by so much," we can actually see what the reduction's coming from, from the different options in the survey, and that tells a little bit different story than just saying, "Oh, it's a reduction," you know? So, um, that's what this report is, is a comparison year to year on the things, and the, one of the key ones per each of the categories. So first one is the number of responses, a little bit lighter response than the previous year, and I don't necessarily wanna read too much into that, because you could argue that when times are tough, people respond a lot because they wanna get their thoughts out there. Uh, when they feel better, maybe they reduce, but it, it's, um, and, and you could argue also difference in timing, the zero's a little bit different timing than, than last year. But sixty-nine from the staff and two-hundred-and-eighty-nine from family, both are lower numbers from last year. General comments, um, there were questions that, that were included that are tied to, the question was phrased, "How much do you think this has changed in the last twelve months?" And if people, the respondents responded, "No change," Panorama doesn't count that as a favorable response. So when you see that the, each category has a summary or an average, I don't know if it's an average, but it's, it's an overall score for that category. If, if everybody said last year things were great and then say things haven't changed in the last twelve months, even though that's a favorable response, Panorama doesn't count it as a favorable response because it's not, things have improved since last, since last year. So we're trying to kind of leave those questions out of the analysis, because we think they're not, the real meaning of that question has to do with what they're referring to, not the answer themselves, right? So, uh, if, if you look at the overall category scores, they, they'll be skewed down by those responses, particularly because last year was a very positive year and people saying that there's no change is actually good. Um, so that, that's the first comment we wanted to make. And also think there's a common trend in a lot of things, so, so we try to pick up the areas that were a reduction in favorable responses and then try to see what the trend was, and it's usually not a concerning one. So I'll just put it, leave it at that and when we get to the details, you'll understand why we say that. The other thing that we included in the survey in the way we designed is there are questions that go across both the staff and the family surveys, and I think that's worth comparing. In general, I would say there's a lot of consistency between the, the response that we get from both surveys. So for example, administration's response to my concerns, three-quarters of both respondents in the family, there's, you know, seventy-five percent on the staff and seventy-eight percent of the family had a favorable, uh, agree or strongly agree with that. Interestingly enough, the, we added, if you remember, questions about the board, does the board focus on the right things? I think the general comment that I would say is, half the people don't know what the board does, and those that do know what the board does agree that we're doing the right things, and there's three or four respondents that feel that we're not. But, uh, if, if you look at that, ninety-nine percent of the responses, well, I guess eighty-nine percent on the staff and ninety-eight percent of the family either, um, have a neutral response, which means they don't know what we do, and, or have a positive response. This is something we knew last year, right? So we, part of it is educating people what the board does, part of it, you could interpret as there being enough trust that, "I don't need to know what the board does," right? So, take it for what it means.
So rule N is neutral on the sheet?
Correct, yes, sorry. And, and I thought it was important to, again, given how Panorama categorizes favorable and non-favorable, they take neutral as not favorable, which is technically, semantically true, but not very helpful. So, um, third one, administration's connected to the classroom, again, similar, this one's a little bit of a difference, fifty-three percent favorable on the staff and sixty-seven a little bit higher on the family, but again, if you add up the neutrals, that's, um, eighty-one and, what, ninety-two percent respectively. And the last one, which, I think this was a new thing we started doing last year on the mission, so we asked a question that says, "AMSA enables students of all backgrounds and abilities to excel in all subjects at an advanced level." This is our way of testing how people feel the school is, is addressing or committing, uh, to the mission. And this one's a little bit of a difference between staff and family, so staff is a little bit less favorable, fifty-two percent along, um, have, agree or strongly agree with that statement, and then a quarter of the staff, um, doesn't have an opinion, or I guess doesn't, neither agrees nor disagrees. So I, I think a mission is one of those things that, and, and there's a lot of discussion about what is all subject, what is all levels and what is advanced level, what is all backgrounds, what, you know, the, the whole discussion that we've had about academic excellence has to do with this. But again, seventy-seven percent are, at least are not saying that the school is not achieving the mission, and it's a little bit higher on the family side, eighty-five percent positive and eleven percent that neither agree nor disagree.
Raul, I'm just wondering, I took a look at the, back to the board question, I took a look at the detail real quick for two thousand and eighteen versus two thousand and nineteen, and I don't know if the difference is significant, but two thousand and eighteen was like fifty-eight percent agreed versus two thousand and nineteen, fifty or fifty-one percent. So it, it just seemed a little interesting to me, there was more agreement that the board was focused, more focused than they were this year on what the important issues are. And I'm just thinking about some of the things we've done in the past with the roundtables and, so I guess we have to peel the onion back further than all the detail, but I just thought that was interesting.
Which is why, I mean, I kind of say it jokingly, but it's an education thing for people to understand what the board is, and, and I know we've discussed it multiple times that it's, for people that come from the public schools, system and district schools, um, the, the role of the board of trustees is very different, and, um, learning what that means is an education, no pun intended, uh, for the people that are coming to the school. So definitely, we can always do more on, on explaining what the board is, which by the way, is also a recruitment tool for people to join the board.
That's true, yeah.
By the way, one comment that I didn't make about the comments is that there's, uh, just as usual, most respondents have a lot of comments, so there's probably around six-hundred comments in total, and we have not gone through all the comments. I, I, we decided not to include going, getting into the comments here, because it's kind of, it's tough to do when, when you have to go through so many comments. But we do, just for anybody here, we do take that seriously and we wanna make sure we, we go through that. Uh, we just, that, the comments, I think, give a lot of detail that are not in the answers of the questions. Um, so like I said, I'm gonna try to do this quickly and, and not go through every single question, but we try to pick for each area, so if you remember how the survey is constructed, there's, uh, categories inside of each survey, so leadership being one of them. Um, for each area, we try to pick the ones that had the biggest change, and we're highlighting a couple of positives and, and also, you know, some of the, the, we'll say negative trends. On the leadership one, there's one, this one here, question three on the staff survey, how well the administration's connected to what's happening in the classroom. It's a reduction compared to last year, the fourteen percent, I mean, fourteen percentage points difference on the, that Panorama considers favorable, and, but if, the reason we put in the break on the different categories is to see where that fourteen percent is going. So some of them, about four percent difference on the, on the neutral ones, and a little bit of a more strongly disagrees on the, on the bottom of that chart. So again, we're trying to highlight difference. Uh, you'll see this is not a consistent trend on the leadership, uh, questions, and there's, um, it's, it's not a consistent trend and, and this reflecting on everything else related to the leadership, and you'll see that as well. This is, um, I mentioned the twelve-month questions not being necessarily very helpful, but, uh, I would just put in this one just to illustrate that point. So there's, um, this is the one that actually we can say there's a, there was a mention of things getting worse rather than improving or no changing, but if you look at the things side tomorrow, um...
Raul, is this a question that came from Panorama or is it one, I mean, I think that we did some of these twelve-month change things because we were so alarmed.
We did, yes.
So is, is this their question or?
No, this, all the twelve-month questions came, were written by, by us.
By, by, yes.
By the survey task, but it's not the, it's not a Panorama question.
I think they're not as relevant as they-
Yeah, are there all, was the rest of the-
I think all of that questions were written by us. We just kept some of the parent questions that kind of happened.
No, I, I think it's a mix. Um, I recall it being a mix for the staff that, that a lot of the twelve, and I agree with Raul's statement that a lot of the twelve-month questions were written by us, but I think some of the, I think that we did take a number of the staff questions as is.
Frankly, I don't know at the top of my head.
We can find out.
Yeah. So anyway, um, my point of this one is on the twelve-month difference, there's, yes, there is a negative, uh, change there, but it's not, you know, when you say sixty-two percent drop, it's not some mean, it's not as negative as it sounds, because there's only, you know, thirteen teachers that said that things have worsened.
Well, I think you could even interpret it differently, right? So if you look at eighteen, eighteen went up significantly, and so what they're saying is compared to eighteen, which was significantly better, there was no change, which means it was still better, right? So I think that's a, not necessarily indicative of-
Right.
If you were happy in two thousand and eighteen-
You're still happy.
And the next year you say, "Hey, I'm still happy, so there's no change, I'm still happy."
That's right. I mean, that's, you know, there's a couple like that, I think if you read the follow-up.
Right. Um, let me just keep forward, just because I think there's a couple here worth, um, mentioning. This is the mission one, the question seventeen on the climate side, that, again, I would say this is not a big change, it's eleven percent drop on the favorable, but, uh, a lot of that came, actually, the percentage of, of the neutrals stayed about the same. So that's where, that's where the, the change comes from, a little more than on the disagree side. But then if you look at the relationship, things having to do with respect, this one was a, an improvement of what was already a, a positive one, right? And, and the percentages here in the, on the staff one are, if you look at the absolute numbers, you realize that one person can, can make, you know, out of ninety people, it's, you know, almost two percent of the, it's more than one percent, so a big percentage changes are a few people here, right?
That's right.
So that, that one's one of the positive ones, we just wanted to make sure. Uh, there's one there on the staff, on the, on the climate side, which I didn't include here, but question eight was a very positive one. So is climate or, yeah, climate doesn't have a question. Sorry, I'm looking at the family one. Sorry, I did wanna call this one out, because it was, um, ninety percent-
It was on the climate and it was, um-
Yeah, the, the ratio between teachers and administrators, so I have teachers and students here, which is seven, but question eight had teachers and administrators and that had a ninety percent favorable one. Nobody strongly disagreed with that one, and two respondents disagreed, so you think about that, all that two people, um, have, don't have a negative connotation on that, on that relation. So both, both, uh, teacher-student and teacher, teacher-administration relationship are, had very positive results, and I think that's important, because it was one of the things that we tried to focus on last year. Uh, trust, again, I just wanna point now that it's not a, it's not a big change, even though it's a drop, but if you think of, um, the second one, so one of the, the focus areas, if you remember, was special education, having, providing the right resources for the, for the, for the teachers, for, um, not only special education, but also all students, you know, non-motivated students, and that's the purpose of that question. Those two questions, question six and seven, had an increase in favorable. And actually, if you think of the, the, um, nobody strongly disagrees and the number of disagreements went down, uh, for question six and stayed about the same in question seven. So again, a positive outcome year over year. Any comments before I move to family? I'm gonna try to keep this short.
So what do you make of, or this for another time, some of the significant decreases, I mean, so the drop in optimism?
Which question would that be?
So climate, question three, top of the climate page. You know, I mean, it, it, the third of, this is the teachers or is this?
This is the staff, we're talking about the staff.
So a third of the staff is not optimistic. Hmm. About the future of AMSA.
Eighteen percent. So what, what I say not optimistic-
Oh, right, because, yeah, although, now, to be neither optimistic nor, you know, for a neutral rating there, I don't know, that's to go from eighty-two to sixty-two on favorables, on optimism measure, where I think you can make a pretty good argument that a neutral response is a bad response.
So I don't know what to, like I said at the beginning, we're, I can state the fact it was a twenty percent drop on the, the favorable responses.
I think the next step-
What do you make of it? That's a, that's another question.
I think comments would be-
Right, the comments would provide-
Highlighting some of the extra feedbacks. Hopefully someone who, those ten people, those three people would have a comment. We should know.
Yeah, and I think one of the things too, Chris, is we knew we had a good, a good bump last year because of the, the huge contrast between the year before and last year, and I think that there was, um, comments made last year when the results came back, that this was, it was kind of outstanding results, and that it might have been part of it that it was just the whole culture change that everybody, and reality is setting in more this year, um, and so there's, you know, some different shifts, the building is still uncertain and-
And I think for many questions, that's a sufficient explanation, but this one, optimism, that seems to me like that requires some real-
Sure.
-cell searching around that one.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree with you, but we also don't have a home, and this time last year, we thought we were gonna have a home, and, um, I haven't been able to give people a good answer on that.
Yep, yep, thanks. Yeah, yeah, thanks. Yeah, so I, what to make of it, I think, the question itself doesn't answer why people are not...
Right.
...as optimistic as they were last year.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I think that's all we can say. The comments could probably provide a glimpse into that, and that's the next place to, to look at. And that's one of the reasons we highlighted this one, because it's one of those that had a big change, and it's important to us to, to address it.
It also says that maybe we can't get to 80 percent optimism without settling the building.
Well, if, if that's why, I mean, I, I think, yeah, we don't know until we ask, those are the kinds of things that trigger, so again, this is a, a very hard thing of taking multiple points of view from, in this case, we're looking only at, at faculty, right?
Yeah.
And trying to understand a, a collective optimism.
Yeah.
So the only way to get to the bottom of that is the kinds of things that are being done, which are creating committees and getting people involved and working together and creating forum for these discussions to come up.
Yeah, it, the experience of sitting down with teachers and talking about these things that I've been doing this, this spring, um, most of which happened late May and into June, um, have, have been very interesting. The other thing is if we don't get the answers, Chris, out of the comments that, that we haven't reviewed yet, um, you know, my thoughts are, well, email everyone and say, hey, this was the results from this question on the survey. I'd love to talk to anyone who would like to talk to me about any of the concerns you had. Um, and I think that we have that kind of relationship with, with our teachers, that if there's major concerns, then come in, let's talk about it and, and figure out what we can do to make it better. You're not happy here at AMSA, we want to know why. We want to address it because we want everyone to feel positive, optimistic, and, and feel good about coming to work every day and working with our kids. That's the goal. So if they're not, I would, I, it's an open door, come on in and talk to us about it.
All right. How am I doing in terms?
Uh, you've got about four and a half minutes.
All right, let's jump to family.
So, possible, minimal change?
Yeah, look, most of it had minimal change. I, I want to highlight the coordination of projects and classworks and whatnot because that had to do with, uh, stress levels and, and from what I remember from last year's comments, it was a, a lot of discussion here. It was a little bit of a bump down, but again, most of that change came from the, the middle ground, people that neither agree nor disagree. And there's positive ones on, uh, technical resources and, uh, being taken into account the specific needs of the students, and I think that's related again to something we highlighted on the faculty one, which is, um, making special, um, giving teachers the resources they need and, and being able to, for them to address specific needs of specific children, of the specific students. So again, a couple of positive bumps there.
Mm-hmm.
Administration, there's, um, I think I made the comparison at the beginning, um, a little more positive on the family side, um, and especially in the effectiveness, where 90 percent effectiveness of administration, nobody strongly disagrees that administration is very effective at AMSA, and only five disagree out of 200, many were there?
Eighty-nine, twenty-one.
289 responses. So I would, I would count that as very positive and trusting of the administration. The board, same thing as we said before, half the people don't know what the board does, and those that know what the board does are okay with it. Only four people disagree or strongly disagree about what the board is doing. It'd be interesting to know what, what those responses tell us about what we should be doing. Um, content and quality of communication, so if you remember, communication was a focus area from last year.
Mm-hmm.
A little bit of a reduction here, and, but if you think of the negative ones, disagree and strongly disagree, percentage-wise, it stayed the same. Uh, again, it's, it's a change, it's 5 percent loose and favorable, but I, I don't really see it as a big difference or a big trend. And then there was something specific about canceling that had an improvement of 5 percent on the favorable ones, 68 from 63 last year. Family support, feeling welcome to come visit their school actually improved 3 percent from last year. So that, I think that's a good thing in general, um, participation on the families. This is the mission question, and there was actually an improvement on this one from last year. You know, the school enables children to fall backwards in abilities to excel in all subjects, increased 5 percent in favorable, and there's actually, we've, well, it's from seven to 5 percent of disagree or strongly disagree, there's only one respondent that strongly disagrees the school's committing, it's accomplishing its mission. And then drugs, I do want to make a comment about, um, the safety one. I think most of the safety ones, there was nothing, um, earth-shattering there, but the, the comments about drugs are a problem. It's, uh, it's trending, I guess, in the wrong direction. There, there were a lot of comments, as there were last year, about the issue of vaping, and that should definitely be a, something that needs to be addressed and, and continue to, to be a focus area in the school. So I, I know there's mixed opinions about how much of a problem that is, but parents are hearing it, so it needs to be addressed. Any other comments? I know I kind of flew through that family side. Anything that the board feels based on this, or any other perception of where we are should be focus areas that we should ask the administration to, to address?
I think safety in general needs to be looked at because all the questions, while maybe they improved, except for the last one that you mentioned, are still, I mean, there's, there's still, you know, 30 percent of the people feel like they're worried about violence. So I don't know if that's just generic...
Cultural, maybe?
Violence outside, you know, like, the whole media violence shooting in the schools violence, or is that violence from particular kids in school or something? I mean, it seems...
We haven't had a physical altercation in the four years that I've been here. I think we've had one last year.
So that's...
So it's minimal, it may be more cultural.
Must be the media or something.
Yeah.
And then did, or the last one is, you know, equally, uh, I mean, the middle one, bullying still seems less than it should be, at 75 percent. So it's just a perception, but I don't know.
That's, that's something that the deans work on 24/7 here at school, is, um, you know, and, and a lot of that is educating students around, um, you know, being kind to each other and being part of a community and, um, and, but that's something that the deans work with the kids on all the time, and school counselors and support staff. And unfortunately, it's everywhere.
Yeah, yeah.
So Raul, what is, what is your next, what are your, is your recommendation of next steps for the task force to complete the survey process?
So we haven't gone through the comments. Uh, we actually haven't talked about that, so I'm gonna do this live, not to put the task force in the spot, but my thought is that we could go through the comments and then sit down with the administration and, and try to have general summary of that. We're not gonna read the 700 comments together, but we'll, we'll come up with general trends.
See if we can bucket them.
Yeah, bucket them and, and then use that to pick focus areas. So I mean, and the task force wouldn't pick the focus areas, it would be a discussion for the administration to agree on what the focus areas would be, if you guys agree with that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
To be coordinated in the next few weeks.
So, yeah, we have a, we have a discussion coming up in governance about process for triaging the, the responses, so...
Oh, okay, so that wasn't completed in the last meeting?
Well, we, we have a recommendation coming out of governance regarding how to triage, uh, but I wanted to run it by, um, to complete the discussion, I wanted to do that for, for the full board.
Okay.
And I, I definitely like the idea that the administration should be in charge of responding to the survey.
Right.
I think that's, that personal opinion, I think that's what, that's the administration's job to do. I think it's our job to provide, provide the data, but, uh, look to other, other people's discussions or questions.
Yep.
So we're good?
Yes, I think we're gonna talk about comments in the governance.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, in governance, we're only gonna talk about process for handling comments, not, not, not the content of the comment.
Right, that's what we need to figure out.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we have a good proposal for that. Other survey questions? No pun intended. All right, onward. Thank you, Raul.
Thank you.
And, was it Raul, Liz, and Jill, or?
Yes.
I think you all answered. I, I, it's a big effort to distill all that...
Yeah.
...out of work.
And we take it very seriously for those of you that responded to these surveys, and staff and families, that this is something that we want to make sure we're listening to.
And this was an excellent presentation, Raul.
Yeah.
It, it's tough to not go one by one, and try to summarize the trends, and so...
But you managed to not go one by one.
Yeah.
Okay. That's a good thing.
All right, so we are up to chair business. Uh, in your packet, I believe there is a board calendar for...
There is.
There is not. Um, all right, so the, the board will be publishing a board calendar, so in most cases, the board meeting will be the, continue to be the fourth Thursday of the month.
It's skipping, huh?
We, we did a little bit of arranging around, uh, the Thanksgiving and, and Christmas holidays, holiday season in December, that we moved, we moved to the first Thursday in December, and then the first or second Thursday in January to bracket that timeframe, but we'll, we'll get, we'll get that out.
I extend that to you, and because I didn't have the, the two other committees, I wasn't really sure, and I didn't think about it, so I apologize, I did, but I will send out what I have. It has all the meetings, it has the finance, and it also has the governance, so I'll send out to you as you're in here. Do that, right?
All right, thank you. And also, just a quick, uh, quorum check for the July meeting, as we, uh, we, we have a July, we have a July meeting currently scheduled for the 20th, I'm...
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, the Thursday in there. So who is available for that Thursday?
I expect to be here.
Oof. And... It's gonna be somewhere in Utah.
Yes, we have, we, we may have a, we'll work on, we may need to be creative for that, uh, meeting, because I also, I would be able to attend, but only remotely myself. So I've currently seen two people able to attend the July meeting, so...
I'm probably fine, I don't know.
Me, and it, and it may be...
It may be okay, I'm not sure.
All right, um, so I will, I will send out a, a poll, and we do, we do have one item that we must get approved in the July, in the July timeframe, which is the...
Annual report.
The annual report.
And the charter renewal.
What if we moved it a week ago?
Oh, well, we'll figure that out offline. So I will, I will be sending out a, a poll or equivalent to see when, what dates, what date works, or does not work. Uh, already done trustee committee appointments. We have received official notification from DEES that the change of the, length of the school day has been approved, and thank you, everyone, for the discussion we had last week in regards to that.
How far is it?
Mars officially approved the start July 1st. That is good. Uh, first, I'd like to apologize, going on to open meeting law guidance, I'd like to give an apology to the board. I overstated, or it was in discuss, in regards to the, um, mission task, vision task force and how open meeting law applies to task forces. I misstated in the last meeting how that would work. Um, the, any task force can be given an assignment from the board, can continue to work on it. Um, the one, the one thing a task force cannot do, the board cannot delegate to the task force to make a decision for the board. So I cannot delegate to the vision committee to write up a vision and that be the final vision of the board, but the vision committee can continue to craft the vision statement without falling under the auspices of open meeting law. So my, my mistake there. I apologize for the confusion I caused. Uh, questions about open meeting law guidance? Next, next up, we have the ED evaluation task force, and this is the ED evaluation task force focusing on Ellen's review for covering the, her, her term is interim ED. Liz, would you like to talk about that, or?
Um, well, I think the only update is that you should have all received a link to, uh, complete your evaluation, and if you can just make sure that you go in and do that so that we have all the data points to complete the process.
Tomorrow.
Not tomorrow, but, you know.
By, by the end of June at the latest.
Mm-hmm. What's the deadline? It was, I thought it was the 22nd.
Well, that was up for discussion because when I went in to do it, it says in there, um, July, but we really need the, um, we need the evaluations completed, um, so that we can, uh, write the report for July. So if you can do it by the end of June, that makes a lot more sense.
By which you mean, you must do it by the end of June?
Yes, let's go with that.
You must, right. So, um, so Pauline is leading the, the task force, and, uh, I talked, talked with Pauline, the, the summary is, I understand, Liz, leap end, if I, I'm misstating something, is that the task force is going to roll up all the feedback that they received by the end of, by the end of June or for the July governance meeting, which I believe is July 10th?
Ninth.
Ninth? Don't have the calendar in front of me. And the, at the July governance meeting, we will discuss the feedback, uh, I'll also be sharing it with Helen ahead of time, and then in the July board meeting, we will be, uh, voting to accept the, the feedback that was received.
I, I do not know, because I wasn't at the governance meeting.
Right.
So I, yeah, I can't confirm or deny.
Right.
Governance is July 9th, did you say? It's usually at 6:00. What am I killing?
Uh, questions on the ED evaluation task force?
I'll put it, I'll put them all, I'm good.
Uh, vision task force update?
Uh, I think we're shooting for next Thursday at 4:00, right? That's good, and if you can give me a location, I'll send out, um, can we meet at the, in the conference room, you know? So next Thursday at 4:00, I'll send out a notice. And if you want to come, you can come. If not, we're gonna discuss basically process, all right, figure out how to move ahead with this.
What, um, what, what are, what are your thoughts?
Um, well, I've got some feedback about, um, who should be involved in this and how, uh, so I thought we, it's important to meet face-to-face to discuss that, um, and it's a lot higher bandwidth when you're actually meeting people than trying to do it via email. So this will be our first meeting, and we'll basically just chat about what we're doing, who's involved, and how we should proceed.
Yeah.
And see how it goes.
All right, so I, I'd encourage you and the task force to stay very focused on, uh, taking the, the, what, what our administrator, from, our facilitator said is to take the 80, our, our 80 percent statement and make it into a draft vision statement.
I didn't hear you, take one.
Start, taking, taking the, to sticking within the goals of taking the 80 percent vision statement that we had crafted during our offsites and converting that into a draft vision statement.
Right.
But to not try to go beyond into the area where, where Chris has spent a couple years in the document of our guiding, going toward the guiding principles document that, that Chris had authored.
Yeah, it would be hard to, if we could get a clarified mandate, I think, because, so, and because we've been doing this by email, it's like, you know, even more difficult. So what is, I'm, so I remember Nan saying, you're 80 percent there, so you should focus on the 20 percent. All right, that's what I remember. I don't remember what the 80 percent was or what the 20 percent is. And so if we had some kind of, and maybe this is our, our discussion on Thursday, let's is. And so if we had some kind of...maybe this is our discussion on Thursday, Liz.
What are we...what's really the deliverable, what's expected of us?
Yeah, I think that is the discussion on Thursday.
Okay. As Chair, I'd like to give you some guidance to say that what we are looking...what's your tactical mission that I think we'll come back, once you come back to the board, we may refactor, but to create a draft vision statement for us as an organization. Based on the...based from the work that we did at the offsite.
That may be appropriate.
Do you need a copy of that again?
I've got a highlighted version.
I mean, there are thousands of vision statements created by boards and, you know, schools all around the country. They're relatively straightforward. They encompass the basic vision of the school. We have 90% of what we need for those, that comes right out of the charter. I don't view it as a particularly difficult thing to do.
I look forward.
Whether or not it comes from the prior work, it may or it may not.
Well, I'll look forward to report at the next board meeting.
Thanks.
We should...I believe there are, other than...the only other task force we have, other task force we have an update from the recruiting task force. We have four candidates that are in the pipeline and a couple more that have been identified that may be entering the pipeline. And it's possible that in the July timeframe, we may be...at governance, we may be bringing forward a couple of candidates that have successfully completed the process. So it's very, very promising. We have extremely strong candidates and looking forward to restocking the board.
Great news.
And I'll thank Chris, I'll thank again for your continued work on the recruiting task force. I think that's part of what...why you're staying on is to help us get through this hurdle.
So restocking the board, it's kind of a statutory out there.
And we have expiration dates.
Point of emphasis fishing again.
Maybe, so far, he's the only one.
But it's not going too far. He's joining us on the advisory board.
Right, right.
That I'd like to pass to Kristen for finance update.
Finance update. Tuesday, we met and reviewed the results for the month of May. Nick, one of our prospective candidates for the board, was there with us as well, so that was excellent. We had a couple of different items come up this month. Most of the items are timing differences, which when we talk about when we spread the budget for next year, that we'll take it into consideration as best as we can, but sometimes you just can't estimate exactly when money and programs are going to happen. So this month, or last month actually, as we noted last month, we had a restatement from DEES for the fees, and that reduced the amount of tuition for this month. A new update is due in the next couple of weeks, and so we'll wait and see what that happens. It will most likely go up or stay neutral. We don't expect that it will go down again, which is good news for the year. That puts us, without any change that we know of in the next two weeks, right now, we look like we're going to be pretty close to budget or slightly down from what our expectations were. Everything else, the income was good until you get to student programs. We had less income there and in the athletic programs. Again, timing, these were ahead going into the period, so we think that that's fine, that's going to hold to the budget. And transportation, this month, they did a refund for the fees associated with buses, given what we had in the bank, that's part of the policy. So that was $43,000 outflow, and that keeps us, though, on par with what our budget was. So total for income was down $150,000 this month, primarily timing and the adjustment from DEES and the busing fees. Additionally, in spend, we had one large item to note, which is student programs. The prom occurred in May, the timing of that led to the variance, and that will not impact the total year, but we expect to have that stay on plan. And for the month, the total associated with expenses were $44,000 over, primarily due to that one item, and we expect to be slightly over for the year as we knew, which was the result of the benefit change at the beginning of the year that's held all the way through. And the projection for the full year, again, not knowing what the tuition change will be in the next two weeks, is that we'll be slightly under our budgeted surplus by about $89,000, but still positive for $448,000 for the year. So very favorable results this year. And I don't think this is passed out, so I apologize. Any questions?
Question. So we're projecting it'll be $89,000 under budget.
That's right. So we're still net over on the total income, and that's being offset by the benefits cost that was over, as well as some of the one-time leasing camp tax charges that we didn't anticipate as well. The water and the water fees and whatnot, which are extra.
Thank you, Kristen. Sarah, can you make sure that the finance report is in the eventual...
I'm sorry.
No?
I'm sorry.
That's my fault.
No, I just want to get more.
You gave me all of those things, you should be sitting right there on my...
No, just more that we...
I can go get them now.
No, no, no. I just want them to be in the online version, so that...
Yeah.
Well, they'll be uploaded into...
Right. That was my request. Thank you. Liz, education?
Okay, just a real quick update. We had our final meeting of the school year. I think that what we have discovered and what we plan to continue is the addition of the student representatives on the education committee has been an extremely positive experience, especially given this last topic for the year was around sort of the stress level that students are under, and, you know, is it internal, is it external? We got a lot of good feedback from the students. We...just because of the timing of the end of the school year, we didn't have a counselor, but they're from the counseling department, but we have exchanged messages, and I think we're going to kick off the education committee for the new school year with this sort of...with the counselors and how we can sort of modify and modulate this as we go through the year. So it was very interesting to get the feedback of the students and their perspective. So that's where we were for the June meeting. So I think that we're going to really use that sort of as our jumping off point for the new school year. That's it.
Questions for Liz?
Gave you some time.
Thank you. Chris, development?
So as Ellen reported, so we're looking 40-ish for the campaign, 43?
Thirty-four thousand was the number.
I'm sorry.
Thirty-four thousand, and we were hoping for 40.
So that is what it is. And in terms of what's going to happen, what's happening with development, with the committee, with the function on the board, for the next, for the summer at any rate, development and governance will meet together. And in our discussion most recently, it was really about the importance of the development consciousness in the board, which we've talked about, but that it's not just that. It's also an integral part of strategy and governance. So the idea is that it's one, it's a big piece of several pieces that we should be attending to as we kind of socialize the new class of trustees. And so we kind of agreed, yeah, that's right, and the rest to be taken from there.
Yeah, the only other thing I'm thinking of is that we had a little discussion on sort of the opportunity going forward for development and whether it's sort of the...all the wonderful things that happen at AMSA and how we leverage those and get those out so that it becomes well-known what a great school this is. There's just tons of things that were...that are happening here that we just need to try to work more on getting it publicized, and so that our board members are almost excited, almost giddy, when you go talk to people about AMSA, because there's so many good things that are happening. So there's a little bit of a discussion on that, too.
Yes, and what the staff has been doing, too, and the other, you know, so while we're doing that, is just to continue to try and do best practice, to look for opportunities, to do things differently, and to learn from them. And so with the aggressiveness that the school has had with reaching out to corporate partners, that's been an example, with things like the reception before Science Night, and then just some brainstorming around, you know, how can we do even better at Science Night going forward, or how can we leverage Arts Night? So the idea of just like continuing to improve, continuing to learn, while we're also building the strategic frame.
I think one sort of...in the discussion, it also was really, part of the discussion related to that was that we as trustees are all ambassadors for the school, and how best the school can leverage both the trustees in situations and to leverage the board advisory council to further the development prospects of the school.
One other thing I'll add real quick, too, was the reflecting on Science Night, we all talked about how amazing that was, and there was so...it was so rich that we could easily sort of take that throughout the year and just sort of take several students and their particular project, and maybe as we had the forums, was it Quest Diagnostics across the street at the Hilton there, and just continue to have those sort of forums where we invite folks to just come see, you know, some of what the AMSA students have done, because there was so much of that science fair that, I mean, I was there two hours, and I think I only got through about 25% of it. So just continuing to leverage, you know, things like that.
Other questions for Chris? Thank you, Kristinev. Governance. So in governance, we had a very detailed, we had a deep discussion about what the survey process should be. And I think we came up with, let's see, I don't...came up with a two-step process, and Jill, you can help me out here as...
You're talking specifically about the comment review, right?
Right, this is a survey process specifically, the open-ended comments that are in the family and faculty surveys. And so we...idea that we have is that there should be a two-step triage process. In the first step, we want to read, go through the comments and identify those where a faculty or family member has made a self-identifying comment saying, "I don't like the way Mr. Jones teaches his class," or something, not "I," but Roger Jarrett doesn't like the way somebody teaches their class. We wanted to...before the administration sees these comments, we wanted to remove things that were identifying, that identified a faculty member or a specific parent, or I think, did we say student? I think we were focused on parents at the time.
Yeah, I don't remember any comments identifying students, actually.
There were some, I remember.
Well, usually, what happens sometimes, parents say, you know, "Little Roger doesn't like his class of blah blah blah," and, you know, so if we want to avoid identifying the student, then I guess that should apply as well.
Yep.
The first step you're talking about is what happens before the admin sees it.
Right.
What was agreed was that anything was identified by the author of the response about, that would identify them as being the author, but names of it will go to admin.
Yeah.
It was just identifying a person, saying something negative.
So we're just trying to protect the identity of the respondent, because we're saying that the surveys are anonymous.
Yes, we want to encourage the comments.
Nor for it to be anonymous, you should not say anything in the comments that identifies you as the respondent.
Right, right. So the first pass is, as Sarah described, to have the respondent not being...removing...
Identifying.
Identifying information for the respondent, but a teacher's name, a faculty name, a...
Parent name.
Parent name would be left in if it was not the identifying, not the author. For the admin state. And then for the second, the second level triage, and this would...so I'll take a step back. There's a two-step process for the parent and faculty survey. The first step is for the administration to be able to see the, as close to as written comments as possible, removing again the identifying, the author identifying category of stuff. Then there's a second pass before sharing with the board, because at the point that it's now shared with the board, it is considered a public document. It is a public document, anything that is shared with the board, so we need to go further in redacting the information before publication to the board. We're trying to strike that balance between transparency and sharing too much. And so in that, Sarah, I think you can take the phrasing off again for the...
For the second, I just remember that the first thing is the task force make sure that the identifier, the respondent, is protected, which is normally, they don't do that, but if it happened, they would. Then the admin would get it, and then further redact, so that they know the names of people, but they would take those out, any of the teachers, the students, parents, anything like that. And then it would go back to the board.
Right, so in the...yeah, so in the...
Administration does that second step, yes. Task force does step one, administration does step two, yes.
And administration could leverage the board in step two, if that helps us to get it done. But it would be administration, it would be administration run, and explicitly the things that would be left in is the names of the principal or ED, you know, if someone had a comment about Ellen, that would be not redacted. If there's a comment about a board member, that would not be redacted. But any, anybody below the, anybody beyond the principal, the ED or board member's name would be redacted in the public version of the document. So that's the proposal that governance approved, and is a recommendation that the board...I'll throw that out as discussion for the board, because this has been a long, ongoing, multiple year discussions, hoping to standardize this once and for all. I think it will be a good process.
It sounds fair. I mean, I always struggle understanding the intention of the redaction, and this makes it clear, because the intention is to preserve the anonymity of the survey itself, but also to, when we put things in public, in the public domain, that have to, you know, be cautious of what that means, because there could be negative impact to that, depending on what the comments are. So transparency is another intention here, so I think it's a good balance. One thing I would say that the...we talked about it when we presented the process itself last board meeting, that I guess if they were adding this first step that doesn't include administration, we need to make sure that panorama, that we update panorama on the process, because they usually share it with the administration and the board at the same time.
Lynn is the only one who gets it.
Right, administrative, Lynn being part of the ministry, but yeah. But, sounds good.
No, it's more clear, so I think it'll be easier. I know there are sometimes, there's no name, but it is so obvious who they're talking about, or, you know what I mean, like those kinds of situations, and we'll just have to deal with them as we come across them. But it's good to have the guideline, but I know there will be situations where we're still going to be like, what should we redact, what shouldn't we, type of thing. So, but we'll figure it out.
So do we need to vote on this?
No, I don't think there's...I think that we're just getting...I guess the next step, we could make this into a policy would be the next step. I think at this point, I'm just reaching consensus on the board that we are going in the right direction, that it's the practice we're going to use, and... the right direction, that it's the practice we're going to use, and the next step would be to turn this into a policy document to the board.
Okay.
So, great. Thank you. The survey process has been a long, long trail, but a very good one and very effective. We've gained, learned a lot over time. So, our next, our next step for the next year, I think Ellen is already sort of ahead of me on this, is that we are going to be working towards setting the ED goals for 1920 year. The process of the overall, we want to first wrap up the evaluation and then think about it, and then I believe that in the August governance and then August meeting, we will have, we will bring to the board a finalized set of goals for the 1920 school year. And it's probably useful, if, I guess I'd seek volunteers for a task force to help in the creation of the goals, because I think it's very much a collaborative effort, obviously, Ellen and I will be working closely on it, but it should, I think I would like to recruit a couple additional members for a task force to help in the goal creation.
I can work on that as well.
All right, Liz.
I can help.
And Kristen.
Sure.
That would be great. All right, so I'd like to appoint an official board task force of Ellen, Kristen, and myself to, for the ED goals creation.
Liz.
And Liz.
Sorry.
Liz.
Okay, I did say, I said Ellen, I meant, yes. Yes, Liz, Kristen, Roger. Liz, Kristen, Roger is the board task force for the ED goals evaluation. Okay. Meeting wrap-up. And Liz, there's other business before meeting wrap-up?
Not business, but I just wanted to take a moment at the end there, I don't know if this is a good time or not, just to, this is my swan song, so the two words that come to mind for me, and that is gratifying journey. And when I got asked to be on the board, my sons, I think, were sophomores, now they'll, hopefully, they'll be seniors next year, stay on my knees. But having joined the board initially, it was like, if anybody remembers or goes back that far, it was like, I know Chris does, it was like drinking from a fire hose. It was like no more than a week or two after joining the board, we were in the process of needing to do a search for an interim ED, then after that, it was a permanent ED, and then we were doing searches for the search committee. And we, many of the nights were like 11 o'clock, 11:30 at night, people like Mike Glass, myself, Scott Ladner, for anybody, I know you remember him.
Yep, yep, yep.
And there was another person, I can't remember, but we had, say it again?
Rick Kamal, wasn't it?
Yeah, Rick Kamal, but we had many late nights and a lot of votes in here, we had some contentious meetings, and I look back now and it's like, you know, the calm, that, you know, the waters have subsided, and it's just, it's been outstanding. I remember going to a cookout, there was an AMSA cookout at a park.
Oh, in Hudson?
Hudson, yes. I'm not sure why.
The 10-year anniversary.
10-year anniversary, okay. And I remember that, and there was music, I think, and I remember Pauline was there and she said, "Ev, can I talk with you?" And I said, "Okay." I said, "What's this?" I think I had been on the board for about six months, and she said, "I wanted to know, would you be willing to be governance chair next year?" And I was like, "But I've only been on the board six months." And then, for the next two years or so, I was governance chair. And I think about during those two years, it seemed like every other month, I think we wore out the complaint policy. It just seemed like every other month, we used to report out and hear about complaints. Okay. And now, I can't remember the last time we even talked about complaints in a board meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, not in the last two years, anyway, so to you, Anders.
Or the last time we talked about uniforms.
Exactly. So, you know, when you think about markers that, you know, sort of defined the change, you know, and the transition in leadership between Anders, yourself, and Ellen, and, you know, there's some visible things that come to mind. So, you know, lots of great people that I worked with, and, you know, when I was on governance, worked closely with Sarah, and just, you know, everybody on the board, I mean, I've just really appreciated the relationships, and even the last year or so, with Chris in development, okay, which is something I didn't have a lot of background in necessarily, but I learned a lot in the relationships and the people. And so, it's all been good. Roger, when I first joined the board, he was sort of my mentor, so that goes back a few years there. So, I just want to say it's been great. I guess I'm not going too far, I guess I got talked into being on the advisory committee, but it's, but it's been good, so it's a journey of gratification, so I just wanted to say that, so enjoy it.
Thank you, Ev. It's been great serving with you on the board and shared many of a common governance and recruiting task force and other complaints and other things. Pauline had, so, I don't want to steal Pauline's thunder, she has served for seven years through many of the turmoils. She had said that she was going to provide me a, her swan song or her summary, I did not get it, and she is off on a cruise, so she's unable to, so I can't even begin to think where we'd be without Pauline. Pauline was the glue that helped us get through, she had stepped forward and took on, took head-on many of the vast, helped get us through these challenges, was the collaborator, was the leader, was what we needed at that time to get us through, and helped build this board, has served multiple committees, finance, governance, recruiting of new members, and sort of her, as you can see, part of her effort and Chris and others, that we've got a incoming list of great board member, great board member candidates. So, I don't know where the school would be without Pauline, and I will attempt to, attempt to take on the chair role and do half of what Pauline had done. So, again, a round of applause for Pauline and all the work that she's done for the school. Sort of call for agenda items for the July board meeting. I heard the two already, which is the, I think we got three. The charter renewal.
And the annual report.
Annual report.
Maybe the handbook, is that coming in?
Handbook's coming in.
Handbook, which will also come through governance, the ED, Ellen's ED evaluation, all four of those will be votes.
It's planning.
Yeah.
So, I don't want anything else, I would suggest.
Survey?
Well, so that's what I was going to say, if the result of us getting together after reviewing the comments would be to discuss with administration a plan of action, then unless somebody thinks otherwise, maybe that plan of action is part of the ED report as opposed to the search, the task force.
Yeah, and I think maybe we're looking at August.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, then nothing for July.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially because we don't even know when that will be.
Right, yeah, I think that makes sense, so in the, we can, so for, you can already start collecting August, so an August agenda item is the administration report out from the survey. Other, other July items. Meeting retrospective, let's, in the effort to continue and approve our meeting process, I'd like to seek feedback on the, on this meeting.
Did we figure out the audio visual issues?
No, but we will next time.
All right.
Ellen needs to get it. I need to set that up well in advance and run it, make sure that it's working.
We made it in under five minutes, so we are on schedule.
On schedule.
I like putting the votes up front.
So, continue votes up front?
Yes, absolutely.
Yep. Big thumbs up on that. Two items I'd throw out there for improvement is needing to get the agenda out much earlier. We got it out at the last possible minute. Had a couple of emails afterwards saying, "Roger, can I have a little more time?" Or, "Did you get that?" So, I'd like to try to get, set a goal to get the agenda out a week before, and also same thing as part of that, the board, the minutes, to try to get the minutes out to the full board a week before the meeting so that you'll have time to review it instead of doing the sprint read in the 24 hours before the board meeting, so.
Didn't we have a, we had a target, I think it was the Friday before, it was a draft, and Sunday was final or something?
Yeah, we talked about something like that, yeah.
We were trying to do earlier in the year, but.
Yeah.
We also talked about being very explicit about what homework was due when.
Right.
So, that goes with, you know.
Right, so I didn't.
Get it out early and saying, "And read it by Thursday."
Right.
Yeah.
I didn't bring up the action items from last time. I think that's one of the things we said we were.
All right.
Yes, we'd get on the full, on the.
That way.
The action items, remember, that we write down the action items and then re-review that we, those were done.
So, do you, do you have, or is it in the minutes for action items from last time?
I don't remember, Frank.
We, I think we sort of started something and then we didn't continue. Are you, do you want to just not do that anymore?
Well, I don't know, I'm not the secretary anymore, so.
Well, I think we could, at the minimum, we could put the action item, the ones we know about, we can put the action items in the minutes.
Yeah.
The challenge is that they get lost because they won't, don't even come out until a week before the meeting, but, so currently, I have the one, I have one action item.
Which?
Did circle that.
Vision folks needed a copy of Mandil's work.
What was that?
The vision task force needed a copy of Mandil's work that we did, just so that they had that, the 80% page.
It's going to happen.
I have that right there.
You have a paper copy? Need a electronic, if you have.
But Jill's annotated.
I didn't. Yours is annotated?
Highlighted.
So, that's an action item for you?
Yeah, I stand with you.
And when you find my action item, let me know.
Your action item?
Yeah.
I have, let's see, upload, this is for me, upload, governance, not, is the board on track.
I think it was, I think it was earlier in the meeting, but we can, we can talk, we don't need to waste group time on that. Other, other feedback on the meeting? I think, I think it was a very productive meeting, we're within schedule?
If you can wrap up in two minutes, we are, we make it under schedule.
All right. I'd like to take a motion to enter executive session and not, and not return to standard meeting afterwards to, for the, for the purchase or lease of real property and litigation strategy, and in the, and I'd like to invite, I found my list of people, and then invited to the executive session will be Eric, Nick Poyer, Mara Webster, Ellen, Liana, and Lisa.
Still moved?
Liana and Ellen. Mara's already a member.
She's not a board member till July 1st.
Not till July.
That's right. Accepted, but not yet.
Second. So, this is a roll call vote, so we have Liz and Chris second, starting with roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Motion, like, take a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Chris?
Second.
I think we should give Ev the, I'd like to give Ev the honors of making the second for the motion to adjourn.
I second the motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.